I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the seed of symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
And County Manager Mike Gallagher, will you please lead us in prayer?
Please join me. Lord, give your people in our county a spirit of unity as we follow you, so that with one heart and mind, we may work together for the good of our county and glorify your name. Give us your humility, Lord, and let all barriers, walls, strongholds, and divisions that keep us separated from you and one another come down in Jesus's name. Amen.
Welcome, everybody. It's been a little bit since we've been in commission, but we're happy to see everybody today. And we'll get started this morning with any public comments and announcements.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Your woman.
Good morning, sir.
Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Frank Nwai and I'm here to help, to come back to you guys and to look at some help where I'm at. And as we all know, we had quite a few rain, we've got a whole bunch of weeds. And there's a lot of people that don't care no amount of time in their yards. And that's why I'm here. My neighbors and my cousins, maybe about three or four feet high weeds and a whole bunch of junk cars. And he looks awful, smells awful. And we've got a lot of skills and we want to help. So I need the help from you guys and see if I can be done on that situation. I appreciate your help if I can get something from you guys. I'll tell you that's it. You have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name's Christina Mann. I'm the Eddy County Beekeeper on call, the Bee Lady. I want to know why taxes are so high in Eddy County. And, you know, I struggle to make my taxes. And it's just a shame because the more you tax people, the less they're able to put money back into their businesses, which would give the county more revenue. I asked my friend Rhonda Hatch why I can't have an agricultural exemption for beekeeping? Because the Department of Agriculture classes honeybees as agriculture. And she said, well, in the first place, you gotta have forty acres. And I got two acres, but I got ten bee hives. And she said, well, I don't know how we'd count that. Maybe number of bees? This is the amount of bees in one deep super and deep hive. And it's ridiculous to think of counting the number of bees. But I have this product, the world's perfect food, and I have gallons of it. And I don't know why I can't get an agricultural exemption. It's just, it's a shame taxes are so high in this county. Because people would thrive with lower taxes. And another issue, you guys moved the entrance to this facility, but you didn't move the handicap parking over to the entrance. And some handicap people are dependent on that access.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mann. Do I have any other public comments this morning? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our service awards, and we have a few this morning. And we just asked that when we call your name, if you would come up here and get your picture, and we have a gift for you. And our first service award is for Rosie Garcia, Treasurer's Office, twenty years. Next, we have Marlena Pell, Detention Center, ten years. Next, we have Nindi Honeyman, Detention Center, five years. And lastly, we have Tanya Taylor, Sheriff's Office, five years. And we have a special award today for Ms. Yulalia El Ruiz, otherwise known as Lala. We're celebrating her retirement from the Motor Vehicle Department of twenty-five years. Meet us out in the foyer area here for a quick picture. Okay, thank you, everybody. We're gonna make a quick adjustment to the agenda. We would like to move item twenty-five, ConocoPhillips grant donation, up to our first agenda item. Chief Matt, if that's okay with you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We've got Justin here from ConocoPhillips, and we just wanted to thank them for their donation that they give us annually. This past April, we received our ten thousand dollars, and we used it to buy McGrath scopes that we utilize for innovation out in the field. So we just wanted to thank them and let them continue speaking.
Yeah, now, ConocoPhillips, we like to, you know, support those initiatives on an annual basis to support the local community, and this year, we're proud to offer that grant to the Eddy County Fire and Rescue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much.
We appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Do you have to vote on that?
I haven't asked, right? So with that, I'll look for a motion to approve ConocoPhillips grant donation.
Salute.
Me? Hey, I'm up.
I have a motion. If I could, please call for the vote.
Klein.
Aye.
Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Moving back into trailing agenda, first item is approval of commission meeting minutes for June tenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve. Don't have to do all the motions today.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Next item is expense approval report for June twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein. Yes. Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, purchase card approval report for May twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein.
Aye.
Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
And lastly, our purchase card approval report for June twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein. Yes. Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you. Item two, Treasury Report for May twenty twenty-five, this is FYI only and was provided to us in our agenda packet. Same as report for June twenty twenty-five, FYI only. Any questions? Thank you. Next, we have our revenue report for May twenty twenty-five, Ms. Lynn O'Callaghan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay, so for May twenty twenty-five revenue report, we'll start with grocery receipts tax. For the month of May, this was February's business activity. The county received almost six point four million dollars in general fund grocery receipts tax, which was up about ten percent from this time last year. So far, for the month of May, the county had received overall sixty-five point nine million dollars in general fund GRT. And just as a side note, just because it's not reflected here, as of May, Fire X-ICE had received sixty-four point, I'm sorry, twenty-four point six million dollars in grocery receipts tax, and Environmental had received twelve point three million dollars. For oil and gas for the month of May, the county received seven point four million dollars in oil and gas total receipts. That includes production equipment and royalties. Again, for February's business activity, the county produced over twenty-five point five million barrels of oil for the month, averaging about sixty-eight dollars price per barrel. Gas had over one hundred and fifty-one point two million units, averaging a little over four dollars price per unit for the month of May. So with that, I will stand for any questions for May's revenue.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, for June twenty twenty-five revenue reports. So for June's grocery receipts and oil and gas distribution for this month, for June, was March's business activity. For grocery receipts tax, the county received six point eight million dollars in general fund grocery receipts tax, totaling seventy-two point seven million dollars for the fiscal year, which is about a seven point six percent increase over last year's total grocery receipts tax received for general fund. Again, for twenty twenty-five, ending twenty twenty-five, Fire X-ICE received a total of twenty-seven point three million dollars, and Environmental received thirteen point six million dollars total GRT. For oil and gas for the month of June, again, this is March's business activity. The county received seven point nine million dollars in oil and gas receipts total for production, equipment, and royalties. We totaled receiving over a hundred and seven million dollars oil and gas, which is about a two percent increase over last year's total oil and gas received. The county produced for the month of June, almost thirty million barrels of oil for the month, at about sixty-six dollars price per barrel. For the whole entire year, we averaged about twenty-six point five million barrels, at about seventy-one and a half dollars price per barrel for the entire year. That's what we averaged. So again, just a reminder going into this new year, we're budgeting twenty-two million barrels, where we're averaging twenty-six point five. And we're budgeting fifty-two dollars price per barrel this fiscal year, where this last fiscal year, we just ended, we were averaging seventy-one and a half dollars price per barrel. For gas, for the month of June, the county produced a hundred and sixty-four million units, at a rate of a little over three dollars price per unit. For the fiscal year, we averaged about a hundred and forty-two million units for gas, averaging rate of a little over three dollars. So again, going into this new fiscal year, this fiscal year, we just started, we budgeted a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five million units. So quite a bit under still the a hundred and forty-two million we were averaging. And we budgeted two dollars price per unit, where we were averaging a steady three dollars for the entire fiscal year we just ended. And with that, I'll stand for any questions for June's revenue report. Any questions? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you. For May's budget versus actual, countywide, there was six hundred and twenty-three point four million dollars collected in revenue. Without transfers, it was about two hundred and eighty-two point eight million. And four hundred and sixty-six point four million expensed countywide, which is about a hundred and twenty-five point eight million dollars without transfers. Again, because we had pretty high transfers this year. For general fund, as of May, we received a total of two hundred and twenty-eight point six million dollars in revenue, about two hundred and twenty-six without transfers. And for expenses, about two hundred and twelve point nine million dollars in expenses, which is about only fifty-three point three million in expenses without transfers. So for the month of May, we were about sixty-eight percent expensed for general fund. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
No questions, but that looks great. Make a motion to approve budget versus actuals, my revenue and expenses.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving into June's budget versus actual, the county ended the fiscal year receiving three hundred and nine point six million dollars in revenue, and that's your true revenue without transfers, collecting over a hundred and five percent of the budgeted revenue countywide. We expensed only about a hundred and forty-three point eight million dollars without transfers, which is about thirty-six percent expensed overall countywide. And again, the biggest reason, because we're so low on expenses, because we had so much in capital, that we didn't end up expensing that, again, moving forward, especially with the new detention center. We'll be expensing a lot more moving forward. For general fund, we ended the fiscal year receiving two hundred and forty-eight million dollars in revenue without transfers. And expense-wise, this is with transfers, ninety-one point ninety-six percent. But without transfers, we expensed fifty-nine point five million dollars, which is about seventy-six percent expensed for general fund. We did have an additional thirty-one point one million dollars ending in fiscal year twenty-five, and that could be utilized putting towards our capital projects that we have coming up, especially the ICIP list that was just brought to you guys here recently. We have quite a bit on that list that would still may be funded by the county, so.
What was that last number?
Thirty-one point one million. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Next, we have our fourth quarter lodgers tax report for fiscal year end twenty twenty-five. We did start off the fiscal year with a hundred and forty-four thousand cash balance. We did end up June thirtieth with a cash balance of two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. We received a little bit over forty-one thousand dollars for lodgers tax for the fourth quarter. And overall, we received a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars for the year. We did not have any expenses in the fourth quarter for lodgers tax. We only ended up having two events this year and paying out for the lodgers tax, which was our Eddy County Fair and our punking patch. And with that, I'll stand for any questions. No questions.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Cordova. Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you. Finally, moving into our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Bringing this back for final approval, as it's due to the state by July thirty-first. We did only have a few changes from the interim budget to the final budget. All of them were in grant-related funds. Just real quickly, our LEPF funds, we had a slight change in that. We were gonna be receiving a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in LEPF funding, so we adjusted for that. Our HIDA Director Fund, we moved about forty-six thousand dollars from operating to personnel to partially pay for our grant administrative position that we have here at the county. Our Corrections Recruitment Grant did decrease from about five hundred and sixty-two thousand to three hundred and ninety-three thousand. There was three grants in relation to that, our Corrections Recruitment, our Fire Recruitment, and our Law Enforcement. They were supposed to be three-year funding opportunities, and legislation had changed them to two years. So this will be the second and final year for the Corrections and Fire Recruitment. And then in our Pecos Valley Drug Test Force, we also had a slight adjustment of sixty dollars, moving it from operating to travel. So those are our only changes from the time that you guys saw the interim to now. So just to go over the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget, just real quick highlights. We do have a countywide expense budget of four hundred and forty-four million dollars. We have total revenue at two hundred and thirty-six point four million dollars. Out of the four hundred and forty-four million expense countywide budget, we have sixty-eight point four million dollars in personnel. We have a large amount of two hundred and twenty-five million for our capital, ninety-three point five million in operating, and a little over fifty-seven million in transfers. Just to highlight some of our personnel changes, our personnel budget did increase from last year, almost fourteen million dollars. We had a big increase, but we had a lot of big changes this year. We'll be adding four new positions to our budget, three of them in our Administration Department, and one of them in our Detention Department. We had nineteen reclassifications. We did unfreeze one allocated position, which is our Governmental Affairs Director position. The county did agree to pay for a hundred percent all insurance for all of our county employees. So that was a six point four million dollar increase in itself. We did allow for a five percent COLA increase across the board to all employees. We did increase our para contribution to the max of seventy-five percent for all of our categories. We did have an insurance premium increase. We accounted for a fifteen percent increase this year. And this is our last year for Senate Bill seventy-two back in twenty twenty, where we had a para increase of point five percent every single year for four years, so this will be the final year for that as well. We did include longevity pay and annual step increases for all employees. So those were the highlights for the personnel budget. Our general fund budget, we do have a balanced budget for general fund, which is a hundred and forty-seven point eight million dollars, and transfers in general fund of about fifty-one point one million dollars. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
I will move to approve the final budget for FYI twenty-six.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liberta.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next, we'll move into item ten, Reprogramming Amendment Number Four for the New Mexico HIDA drug trafficking area.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, so I'm here to present a Reprogramming Amendment Number Four for the New Mexico HIDA. They're moving funds from the initiative program of intelligence and enforcement, and it's gonna be from their travel category to services, and that is to purchase a self-worth license. The amount that it's being moved, it's eight thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. And I did include there the new balances for each of those categories. And that's pretty much that one simple is just reprogramming funds. Do you have any questions for that?
I'll make a motion to approve G twenty-three, S N zero zero two seven eight.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you. So I do have a second item for the same grant. It's G twenty-three, S N zero zero two seven eight, Reprogram HIDA. And now they're moving back money from services to travel, same initiative, crime gun, intelligence, and enforcement. But this time, it's to cover travel expenses and then just to zero out that initiative. And the amount we move is seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is sixty-sixths. Okay, any questions?
Make a motion to approve Reprogramming Amendment Number Five for HIDA.
Motion.
Second.
Please call for the vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have FYI-only item, twenty twenty-five OEM Public Works Flood Presentation. Hazer Archer and Jen Omena.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Okay, so we wanted to present a little bit about the flooding procedures and things that we've been seeing on the weather lately. So rainfall totals for June first through the eleventh of July for Artesia, we had three point seven seven. And since then, it's, we've had an additional point three seven. Carlsbad Airport, we've had four point four two and an additional point two one. The caverns, we've seen seven point four seven inches. We saw one point nine six in the last two weeks of the July eleventh date. And then we've seen point oh eight since July eleventh. The annual average for Eddy County is thirteen point four three. So this is a twenty twenty-one swiftwater rescue. These are some of the things that the Carlsbad and County Fire respond to. And Hazer can talk a little bit, but we wanted to talk a little bit about the resources that it takes to perform a swiftwater rescue. It can take anywhere from a minimum of four people, sometimes up to twelve people depending on the incident. And those can take several hours, and sometimes quicker than that. But Hazer will touch a little bit on this picture.
So on this twenty twenty-one, this low water crossing has been converted to a concrete low water crossing. As you can see, pieces of the old one are floating down the river right here. Where that truck's sitting, there's about a four-foot footer in the bottom of that. And then there's also brakes in the middle of the channel there to slow that water down, just because, I mean, the volume of water coming through there is tremendous. That tree that is in that picture is no longer there. It's been swept away since, so. That water can move that big of a tree. It's pretty amazing.
So the unforeseen hazards, what people don't really understand is that from the surface, the water, it looks like the road is crossable. You don't see what's underneath the road. It only takes six inches of water to reach the bottom of your vehicle most times. Takes about a foot of water to float the vehicle away, and about two feet to just carry it away completely.
So this picture on the right was taken mid-June. That's actually the second time that that area washed out. We repaired it, and we got another flood, and it washed it away again. And if you can see the water line up there, it's about three-quarters of the way up that hill. That's how high it was at one point, so people were trying to cross that. That's how high it was at one point, so people were trying to cross that. Luckily, we didn't have anyone cross it this time and drive off in that. On the left there, that orange building is our Eddie County Shooting Range building. The house that's right there on our property, that's about six foot of water, and it looks like it's just level going across there in that picture. So you definitely don't know what's underneath, and we encourage the public not to drive through a flooded area.
Some of the response that we do, we have a great coordination between the agencies. My office, the Office of Emergency Management with Public Works, Eddie County Fire and Rescue, the Carlsbad Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, and then with dispatch. We go out and we drive the roads. My office does briefings with National Weather Service. Typically, when there's weather coming in, we have two or three briefings, sometimes a day, sometimes more. When the weather is just normal, we usually have briefings every Monday to let us know what is coming. And then we drive the roads, the road condition assessments, we drive them and coordinating between all of these agencies and to see, to put eyes on what's out there, you know, what's coming down, depending on where the storm is coming in from, or even when it's been raining just in surrounding areas. Because sometimes that's a lot of the things that we get, well, it's not even raining in town, so why would those roads be flooded? But we have to take into account the water that's coming in from surrounding areas. And then we do public safety alerts. We put the alerts out via social media, text messages, radio, and different, on the website sometimes. And then our resources allocations. Typically, I'm talking to the chiefs before the weather is coming in to let them know what's coming in, and they are as well looking at the weather. We discuss it, and oftentimes they bring in additional staffing, especially for swiftwater. And then we also, Public Works also goes out and put signs out, so they're there already, so we don't have to, you know, rush to their department to get them beforehand. And we put those usually on the roads that flood often. And then afterwards, when the rain dies down, when the water kind of recedes a little bit, we drive those roads again to assess any damage that might be done. We take extra pictures and so forth. In the event that there's ever a FEMA declaration, they usually ask for pictures before and after and during, and so we try to stay on top of that. So again, it's a collaboration between, with about twelve chiefs. We have a text group that I set up and I send messages out. They send pictures back, you know, the things that they're seeing out in the field. We have about fourteen thousand Facebook followers on our, on the OEM page. And that's primarily what we put that out on, but we also use media channels. We have at least, we contact with at least three radio stations that are really good about helping us put that message out on what roads are closed. And they also follow my page and they'll call me often or text me and say, you know, hey, is this road back opened or whatever? But this is an example of a post that has been put out. You can see where we update, you know, eight forty-five at ten oh six, any changes that take place within the day into the night. And then the internal team briefings, we talk all day, all night, several times during the day and during the night. And then if it's bad enough, we will activate the emergency operations center over at Fire Service, and we all meet there to discuss what steps are next. Speaking of next steps and preparedness planning, again, here's the opting in for the emergency alerts. Those are the rave alerts that you can text and get signed up on. We are trying to improve our GIS mapping tools. We've got one hundred and thirty-four low-water crossings, eleven bridges. And we've been talking to Hazer and his crew about maybe putting a map together of all of those low-water crossings that the fire departments or the SO units can carry in their vehicles to make sure we put eyes on everything that may be affected. And then I've been talking to a couple of the guys over at Carlsbad Fire that are looking into updating and expanding the early warning alert systems. Those are the outside warning alert systems that are triggered by Carlsbad Fire usually. Again, they're outside warning systems, so it's not meant to be, you know, heard while you're inside watching TV or anything like that, but more so for the parks and things like that. And then increasing community education. The chiefs are real good about partnering with us and, you know, putting the word out. And any education that we can talk about, the turnaround, don't drown. It's just a phrase until you're in the middle of that water and you're the one kind of floating away, so. And then continued building interagency coordination. Public Works for Carlsbad, Artesia, you know, we want to, we all want to get into those groups and talk, but we do a pretty good job of that.
All right, we'll kind of move into the road department. So a lot of people are unaware, and we want to make them aware, that we have twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, we have a road crew on call. Six supervisory staff rotate call every Thursday morning. So every six weeks, you have a senior-level manager on call and at all times. And that's who dispatch contacts. Of course, I'm in talks with Jen, with Chief Mack, with the chiefs, and I'm in that group that Jen was talking about. We have two crew members on every Monday that rotate call, one in Artesia and one in Carlsbad at our respective departments. Those are equipment operators, so it's not just for flooding, it's for any kind of incident, crashes, oil spills, that sort of thing, damage to the roadway, any of that sort. And then depending on the severity of the instance, we can call in additional resources at any time. And we have guys that are willing and able, and they love to come in and help us out, so. So our road closures, kind of the order of operations that it goes in. So dispatch, right, it comes through our managers, OEM, Rita calls us, the sheriff, fire, depending on who observes it, even some of our team members. A lot of times, we'll find issues that we need to close roads for. So the supervisory staff is notified. We identify the severity of the occurrence, what it is, how it is, what we need to do. We determine the equipment required. Can we sweep it off with a broom, or is it going to take a blade, a backhoe, and a trackhoe to get it fixed? We determine the crew required to run that equipment, and then we determine the signage we need. Is it a, is it an instance? A downstop sign is an immediate call-out, and we get that fixed. Speed limit sign can probably wait till the morning. I'm not going to send a guy out in the middle of the night to fix a speed limit sign just for safety purposes. Then we notify OEM if any road closures for, so they can get it out to their. Jen's really good about sending out a Facebook, sending it out away to wherever it needs to go to let everyone know, hey, we're closing this road for a purpose, goes to dispatch, Fire Services, so that they know not to send emergency personnel down that road. So these are just some of the pictures, the next few slides of kind of some of the occurrences that have happened. It's tough to tell in this picture, but on that left-hand picture, it's undermined the road. This is Dark Canyon. This was right after the first occurrence that came through here. That water on the right is about three foot deep, give or take. So definitely some of those unforeseen hazards. Happy Valley had a landspout come down. On the left, bottom picture, that is a roof from somebody's house, part of their roof blew off. It blew a trailer over, a mobile home. And then on the top left is a arrow, one of those little arrow metal sheds. It just wadded it up like crazy. And then our structures at Happy Valley Park, that it ripped those to pieces, but it was pretty insane out there. Armstrong Road, so Hope got a pretty substantial amount of rain this year, more than I've seen. So these are just some of the pictures that, from Hope. I wanted to give a shout out to one of my guys. On July fourth, he was out there closing roads. He was out there for roughly ten hours, closing, moving signs, doing things for us. So I just want to give him a shout out. Trails End, so I had an engineer come look at this. This is actually one of our eleven bridges, and the water came over the top of this. It's actually a culvert that the Army Corps of Engineers put in roughly around two thousand and eleven, I believe. There's no structural damage to this. However, when the water came over the top, it floated the asphalt and stuffed dirt and debris in there. Since then, repairs have been made to make it cross the pool. McDonald Road. So as y'all are very well aware, this is actually in Commissioner Carlson's district. This road is highly traveled for daily usage. I mean, we're talking close fifty-five hundred to six thousand cars, vehicles, a day. It is insane, the traffic counts that we have out there. So you can imagine how much that hinders whenever we have a river back up. And that's what that picture on the right is, and a royal came down, backed the river up, and now it's coming across. So in our ICIP plan, we had planned to put a bigger bridge in there so we don't influx that or cause a hazard to traffic going through there. The oil field has found a way, and they've made a way, and we do not advise it. We have it closed. You can see our road close signs in that middle picture. They drive over them, through them, around them. We definitely don't advise that, but it is happening. I am in talks with the BLM and the Waterways Commission to get this resolved, to get that water to go, the water level reduced. Longhorn Road is also another one. We're probably seeing thirty-five hundred cars on that a day. Or I say cars, it's vehicles, heavy truck traffic, that sort of thing. So any hindrance in those areas is detrimental. This picture on the left is actually from the McDonald crossing, a wrecker loading up vehicles, hauling them off. So that's what we have, the life changes in a flash, turnaround, don't drown. There's a reason for that. It not only puts yourself at risk, but it also puts our emergency personnel at risk too. Here's our contact information for road issues on the left and emergency services on the right. If there is an emergency, call nine-one-one first before you call our road department. And with that, stand for any questions?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think a lot of people were wondering everything that could kind of happen with all the rainfall. So this was very helpful for us to understand the process. And it definitely is a process, right, to get everybody dispatched, so thank you guys very much.
And since all of this, all the roads are traveled, you can travel them again safely.
That's what I was about to ask.
Yep.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is request for reclassification from heavy equipment operator lead man to road foreman. Mr. Hazer Archer.
So going through our, excuse me, our structure a little bit in our department, there were some jobs that weren't quite aligned with where they needed to be. So as you'll see in the next four, for fairness and consistency, I wanted to move these jobs up to be equals. We had some separation in there. So the road lead man to foreman, he's responsible for leading the crew out in the field. He does a lot of the work. If a guy needs a tire, something that he's running, he's doing, then he also operates equipment too. Just a little heads up on that. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the reclassification for heavy equipment operator lead man to road foreman.
Second.
Motion second, please copy the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
The next one is the sign shop supervisor to the shop foreman. He, this is where the major influx was in pay difference and responsibilities. He had the same amount of responsibilities, so we're reclassifying that to get him equal pay.
I'll make a motion for reclassification from sign shop supervisor to sign shop foreman.
Second.
Motion second, please copy the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
The next one is the vector control manager to vector control foreman. This is where we brought the equality table to, for all of our foremen, our regular foremen. This is where we brought the equality to.
I'll make a motion to approve vector control manager to vector control foreman.
Second.
Motion second, please copy the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
So the last one that I have is for the road shop foreman to a senior road shop foreman. We are going to combine two shops and make a senior foreman out of that, so they'll be running the Artesia and Carlsbad Public Workshop. So it just better aligns with the processes and it makes everything work a little better.
I'll make a motion for reclassification from road shop foreman to senior road shop fleet foreman.
Second.
Motion second, please copy the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is appointing individuals to serve on the executive design committee for the Eddie County Administrative Complex project. Attorney General.
Good morning, ma'am, Chair Commissioners. This item would approve the appointment of five individuals to serve on the executive design committee. As you know, we are, we're wanting to do this project and to ensure the project moves forward and quickly. We don't lose any time. Having a design committee would be very helpful. My recommendation is that the design committee would consist of the county treasurer, Patsy. I've spoken to her about this. The warden, Billy, to get sort of an outside perspective. Myself is the county manager, and two county commissioners. And I would defer to the board members to select which two among you would be best. Need are limited to two members, because if we have three or more, then we're getting to that quorum business, but that's my recommendation. Again, this action item before you would approve those five individuals with the two commissioners that you all recommend or would like to see on there.
And we've had some discussions about this as well, and, you know, I expressed, you know, interest right away. It is in my district, not that it mattered. Well, I mean, it kind of does.
That matters.
But, you know, I felt that it would be, it would make sense, both of us, chair, vice chair, we live, you know, in the city limits. My recommendation would be myself and Commissioner Bowen to serve on the committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the committee as stated.
So, ma'am chair, that would conclude then Commissioner Cordova, Commissioner Bowen, myself, the treasurer, and Billy the warden. Very good?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Motion second, please copy the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Great. Chair Commissioners, thank you. The next item for your consideration is consideration of a salary increase, really an adjustment for our community services director position. Similar to what Hazer had brought to you all in terms of reclassifications of some positions, we see that the current budgeted salary for our community services director position is approximately one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The salary of one hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred is in line with the other department heads. It's more consistent. And I would ask, you know, for that alignment. And I believe that the salary of one hundred and thirty-two is more consistent and appropriate for the amount of work that we would expect from the community services director. And I would stand for questions that you may have.
I'll make a motion to approve the increase in community, increase in salary for the community services.
Second.
Motion second, please copy the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Great. And on that, ma'am chair and commissioners, it wasn't on there, but I expect to appoint Deborah Hampton to that position, provided that these other items proceed with my recommendation. Deborah Hampton does a phenomenal job for the county. Among her certifications and her credentials, and she has a master's degree, and she's been with the county, I think, for twelve years, fourteen years? Something like that? Twenty-five years? It varies, somewhere between fourteen years and thirty-five years. But Deborah does a great job. But, uh, Deborah does a great job and, uh, part of the community services department, we're going to see, I believe, a, an, a, a, a concerted effort to work with the nonprofits more, uh, in the county. And I think we're gonna, I, I'm very excited to see what Deborah will, uh, how she's going to lead that department. With that, the next item for your consideration, uh, chair and commissioners, is the creation of the community development department. Uh, currently, community services houses varied functions that include indigent, lodger's tax, MVD, DWI, treatment, probation, prevention, uh, GIS, business license, addressing, planning, and code enforcement. And so this, the concept here with the creation of a community development department, the functions of, uh, the functions of planning, addressing, um, planning, addressing GIS and business license would remain with the, uh, community development department. Uh, this, this agenda item would also approve a director level position to oversee that department. Uh, we'll be advertising for this position if the commission approves this agenda item. Uh, I think it's important that we find an individual who can, uh, work with our business community, uh, work with the Carlsbad Department of Development. Hello, Kristen. I see you here, you're here. As well as working with just the entire, uh, uh, county. Uh, one of the items that we have found, right, that is important to make sure that we're doing things correctly and that we're doing things in, in efficiently is our subdivision process and our review process. And I believe having a community development, uh, director will, will ensure that type of a process. And I'll stand for questions that the board may have. Uh, I definitely see an, an area of growth for this department is going to be GIS. Uh, and working with, uh, emergency management, the road department. Uh, as we, you know, really look at identifying some of those, uh, roads or areas that are more prone to flooding. I think those are areas that we definitely need to, uh, emphasize in all of our GIS layers. And with that, I'll stand for questions that the board may have.
Was this put into the budget this year?
This position was not put into the budget this year. Um, separating, creating the community development department, you know, the, the increase of that would be that, uh, director position.
Any further questions? Okay, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cervella?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Great. Commissioners, thank you. Uh, this next item would, uh, so right now, we have varied county functions that are involved in reviews and enforcement, uh, animal control, control code enforcement. And they're right now spread across three different departments and offices. The sheriff's office currently houses animal control. Uh, fire and rescue currently houses their permitting and review and fire inspections. And then currently, right now, community services houses code enforcement. Uh, this agenda item would, um, combine those functions or would move those functions into one department, and that'll be fire and rescue. I visited with the chief Mac about this. Uh, lots of benefits of doing this. Uh, one, we often see that there's relationships, work relationships between animal control and code enforcement. But right now, we have animal control in the sheriff's office, code enforcement, and community services. Um, you know, moving animal control out of the sheriff's office, that's just one, like, sort of, you know, non-law enforcement related function that the sheriff's office currently undertakes. Uh, moving it under fire and rescue allows for across, allows for the ability for staff to be trained for fire inspections, code enforcement, and animal control. So this does not have a budget impact. It's more of a, you know, moving funds from one department or office to another. Uh, but in terms of the organization, you would have one department, uh, handling those non-law enforcement or those, you know, non-criminal functions, uh, which would be the fire and rescue department. And I would, uh, stand for questions that you may have.
I don't have any questions, but I'm excited to see this after I brought it up and I talked to Chief Mac and, uh, before, and I, I believe that this is a good, good fit, so. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cervella?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Great. Commissioners, thank you. Uh, this next item does not have a financial impact. Uh, this next item is already a budgeted, is already a position that's already budgeted within, uh, the county manager's department. Uh, that is the director of government and public affairs. Uh, their quest here is to change that job title and that description to a chief of staff position. Uh, currently, like I said, the director of government and public affairs, that is a, that's a position that's been funded for this fiscal year. But what I see is that we have a lot of different areas where the county has the opportunity to have a larger impact. Uh, one of those is lodger's tax. And following this, I have another agenda item that I want to ask, to move lodger's tax to the county manager's department. Uh, I like that idea because it allows for us, with our public information officer, the staff that we have, to greater publicize, advertise, and really oversee the lodger's tax, uh, program. Uh, that's one area. There's other areas in the county where I think we can provide some additional training and coaching uh, for employees and supervisors. Uh, and that really is within, kind of, that would fall within a chief of staff type of position. Um, we also see that the county here, we have, uh, you know, Southeast New Mexico College. We have high schools here. Um, we have the opportunity to have, I think, a really flourishing county internship program. I'm familiar with, um, starting, implementing, and having staff oversee an internship program. Uh, that includes students both in high school and in college. You don't have to have your students actually in the office. Some can provide functions, you know, a telecommute. Uh, that takes staff to do that. It takes staff to do that. It takes some oversight to do that. Um, what I'm looking for here is really sort of a right-hand advisor, uh, to the county manager, to myself. Uh, someone who has a very, uh, in-depth knowledge of how the organization operates, who has, you know, a strong relationships with folks within this organization and outside of the organization. Uh, and someone who can really, um, build and promote and really do that level of public engagement and public education that, that you all would expect and our residents would, would expect. Again, that takes someone who has that level of know-how. Um, we have a number of different, I believe, strategic initiatives that this commission would like to see us undertake. And the more discretion you can provide individuals, be it, uh, staff at any level of the organization, but the more discretion you can provide them, you know, the more gets done, right? Provided that they have the education, the training, and the experience to make the right decisions. So again, this position, it does not impact the budget. Uh, this would allow for the reclassification or the title change of the director of government and public affairs to chief of staff. I do have a person in mind. Uh, that person is Adrian Jones. Uh, she's currently within the county manager's, uh, department. I might also add that as county manager, not only do I supervise the department heads or work with the department heads, I also have my own department. And within my department, um, this position would supervise, uh, eight individu- uh, up to eight individuals right now. That's what's budgeted. So this allows for, um, I believe, a really good areas in terms of succession planning and really just accomplishing more, uh, that this commission would expect us to do. And with that, uh, Chair Commissioners, I'll stand for questions that you may have.
No questions. Uh, I'm very excited about this initiative, especially the education, the training. I think that we can find a better person to hold this, this position than Adrian. Um, so I'm very eager to see, you know, where this goes. And with that, I will look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cervella?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Great. Adrian, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And don't get paid anymore.
All right. So, okay. So I, I appreciate that. Apologies for the interruption. Uh, next item for your consideration, uh, here's some extra work, Miss Adrian. That is assigning the lodger's tax program from, uh, community services to the county manager department. Uh, again, I believe with the staff that we have, this will allow for this greater exposure of that program. Uh, and I believe, you know, the funding's there. I think if the funding is there, if we have a balance or if we are not showing that we're continually, you know, continuously getting new applications in, right? Uh, that there's areas for improvement. And, uh, I believe the county manager's department, uh, will be able to do, uh, I just expect more activity out of this, and, and that's what it's about. Now stand for questions that you may have.
And I would imagine that if, if someone is interested in applying for funds, probably the first call they make is probably to the county manager's office or something.
Varies, yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Okay.
And in addition to that, I think with our PIO being in the county managers, county managers' department, it makes the most sense, since that's where the point of contact is anyway, that's going to be broadcasting all this, that is assigned there. So I'll make a motion to approve signing lodger's tax from community services to county manager department.
I'll second that.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cervella?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Great. Ma'am, Chair Commissioners, thank you.
Next item, we have R- twenty-five dash eight-one, resolution delegating the county manager limited purchase contract and grant approval authority, Mr. Cass.
You know, I wrote a whole lot for the background information, but the commission, you know, is in fact the fiscal agent for all county funds, but we have a lot of situations where everybody's bringing to the commission, putting them on the agenda, multiple contract purchases, agreements, even smaller purchases. Sometimes people want a contract signed. Well, that has to come to the commission. So I talked to Mike about this. I said, it sure makes a lot more sense on this day-to-day things that are a smaller value. If the commission would give him the authority to not wait till the next county commission, he can actually sign an agreement or approve purchases, contracts, et cetera, under a certain level. The sixty thousand dollars, he still has to follow, he would still have to follow the procurement code. And, and he knows that, and he would do that. The other thing I put in here is he also needs to have the authority. Sometimes we have settlements that the Mexico counties are recommending. And it, it may be a three weeks, four weeks before we have a meeting now. And if we give him the authority to go ahead and settle within that fifty, sixty thousand dollars, he can go ahead and settle these cases, sign off on settlement documents that are required to settle some of these cases. Whether we're the plaintiff or we're the ones being sued, but it doesn't have to come to the county commission, go into a closed meeting, talk about it, come back out, and it's a small claim like this. Now, the major ones, obviously, you guys are going to be putting in the middle of those. And I hope we don't have any more of those for a while, but we've had a number of. But I, I had prepared a resolution that goes ahead and, and designates and allows whoever the county manager is to have that authority.
I mean, it makes sense, and I'm sure that this will kind of move things along as far as county business goes for a lot of departments.
It will.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just a couple of things on that. I, I just want to clarify, this is pretty standard practice too, correct?
It is.
This, this isn't something that we're just creating. This is something that...
There are some counties that have a larger amount that the county manager has authority. Even if it was like that, he still would have to comply with the, with the procurement code.
And then the second thing is that, um, Mike does such a great job of communicating with each of us.
Oh, yeah.
Um, throughout the week. So if anything is coming up, we, we, we would have some knowledge of it before, so. Yeah, this is, this is excellent. Make a motion to approve R- twenty-five dash eight-one.
I'll second that.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cervella?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
The next item, earlier in the year, the commission passed a resolution designating the chain of command in the event that our current county manager or county manager's not going to be present for a while, whether it's an emergent situation or vacation or whatever. And it had a specific line of chain of command. And in a lot of the different issues that this county commission faces and the county faces, and Mike stays abreast of that. I mean, he's always on top of everything. And I would imagine if he wasn't here, the next county commissioner would be in the same, county manager would be in the same position. So I did put a resolution together repealing the old resolution twenty-five oh-four. And in the, in the event Mike is emergent away or has to go to Santa Fe for four or five days while he's away, he knows the issues that are pressing, and he would be the one to designate the individual to serve as the acting county manager while he's gone. So we don't have somebody that's over here that doesn't even have, no, is not involved in those issues that are being treated at the time. He can say, while I'm gone, here's the one I want to handle this, and let him make that decision. He may not like that, but I think it's a good idea.
No, we, he discussed this with us as well, and, and it just makes sense.
It does.
It, it, the county manager should have the ability to designate that person or delegate those tasks, so.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'll make a motion to approve R- twenty-five eighty-five, establishing the designation process for the chain of command during county manager's absence.
I'll second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cervella?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Next item, we have proposal for expansion of the county law enforcement training facility. Mitchell and Cruz Architecture LLC, Ms. Jasmine Silver.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner. Um, Mitchell and Cruz Architecture is pleased to present the proposed expansion of the Eddie County Law Enforcement Training Facility. Um, today, we have Dean Cruz with us to walk you through this project. So Dean, at this time, you'll go ahead and present.
Madam Chair, more than a minute, thank you for inviting us here this morning to make this presentation. At the end of the original, uh, phase of this project, we had the opportunity to spend, uh, a little more time with the user groups. And so some additional, uh, needs came to light in several meetings and discussions. This is what we've, uh, come with, up with to address those needs for them. And so... So it's proposed to do an addition to the building on the east side. The original, um, plans called for a patio to be on that side. It was an alternate. It was deleted. And, uh, we have access to the utilities there, water, power, sewer, and all that, the existing condensers that are there now. Their main need was for more restrooms in the existing facility. It was, the bathrooms were all existing. We left them basically as they were. When there's a big training session involved, I guess they have a lot more people. It's not out every day, but on those occasions, they do need more restrooms. And since one of the things they also asked for was a fitness room, we decided to add the restrooms in the form of like a small locker room. So there's, uh, two showers and two water closets, uh, or urinal, a little janitor's closet, the fitness room. And to create a passage to the addition, kind of going through the existing break room, which we already had cut down, we kind of pushed out the, the seating for the break room. The kitchen will stay where it is, kind of creates a little alcove there for a workroom, place for their coffee machine, shredder, all that kind of stuff. And then gives you a little place to have the, the tables for the break room. They also asked for an ice machine. It would, we need to put a couple electric water coolers in there. And then direct access to the fitness room. And then the patio there, there originally was just going to be some shelter, some shade shelter. But, um, we decided after some discussion, make just a covered patio. It faces north. It'll be a nice shady spot. And we, uh, put some storefront there to get some nice daylight into both of those spaces. So the original building, uh, is ten, just a little over ten thousand square feet. The addition is, it's a little over two thousand, which would make it about twelve thousand square feet total. And this is just what it, it's a pre-engineered metal building, adding on to pre-engineered metal buildings. So it's nothing spectacular, but, uh, that's it, uh, on the left-hand side of the, of that one elevation. And you see it from the side elevation. It's a, just a two thousand square foot building. The plate height's not that high, so it'll tie into the side of the original building there. And there's the pros and cons of doing an addition versus a standalone building. We feel like the addition makes more sense. We can utilize then the existing electrical service, uh, tying to those existing condensers, which will reduce cost, uh, those sort of things. If, if we separated it, you, you just kind of solve one problem, create a few more, uh, and electrical service, all that stuff. So the pros and scope of work is to do the fitness room, the locker rooms, the janitor's... So, the pros and scope of work is to do the fitness room, the locker rooms, the janitor's room, the covered patio, create that passage, and expand the break room. Some other things that they asked for were, there's a big wall in the big training room that they wanted to put a video wall, take four seventy-five inch monitors, and to do that, we'd have to relocate one of the emergency light fixtures, a buzz lock at the front door, and then some additional wall-mounted monitors in five of the offices. And then, there's a note from my engineer saying that we compare the calculated load to the actual peak demand load, and Jasmine has provided us with some of the utility bills since they moved into the building, that'll help him, but he's saying it may require upgrade to the electrical service, but if they can get the actual utility bills, they can prove what the peak demand is versus the calculated demand. And then we'll, like I said, tie the HVAC into the existing condensers, to avoid any addition electrical load and reduce the project cost. So, a couple of months ago, we had our estimator do a report, he came back at one point two nine million dollars, or six hundred and thirty-two dollars a square foot. His figure includes the contingency markup insurance and bonds. Lately, figures for public work have been in the nine hundred thousand dollar per square foot range. And this is such a small project, but restrooms are about one of the more expensive things you can add, and the smaller your project, the, the shorter your scale of economy is. So, we rounded that off to one point three million. The existing gate is about four hundred and forty feet from the building, and originally, we decided, if the county asked for a solar-powered gate, which is what we put, and it's be more ideal to have actual power to the gate. We did add a cantilevered slide gate there, so, it's not like we're digging through a cotton patch. It's hard digging for four hundred and forty feet, so the price for that's forty-five thousand, plus the miscellaneous electrical work, they said fifteen thousand, so that brings you to one point three six million. If you include the tax, that'll bring the total project to one point four six million. And then, other things outside of construction costs that you might need to consider, the appliances, if they're going to procure their own ice machine, or whatever, fitness equipment, any kind of furniture that they might have in the break room, something like that. And then, we put together a slide to, in case a question came up versus, an addition versus a standalone building, we think it makes more sense to do it as just a small addition to the building. And then we still have room, if in the future we ever want to expand, there's still room on the site, room to add to the existing building, more offices, more training required if we need maybe at that time.
Good, that was going to be it.
So, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
No, I was just saying, it's good to know that if we need to add on additionally, that we still have that space to do so. County Manager Gallagher spoke to us individually about this, and it needs to be done, so, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve. Oh, sorry, excuse me. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, we have schedule of time for Board of Commissioners to our Eddy County Detention Center, Warden Massengill.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We talked about it last month, this is just a lock-in to vote, and get it on document that you guys will be visiting us.
Did we set this for August nineteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that still work? Because that's after our next meeting, correct?
That's during the...
Yeah.
That works for me.
Mm-hmm. Yep, so, we'll continue with Tuesday, August nineteenth, just following commission meeting?
That sounds good.
Does that sound good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, looking forward to it.
All right, next we have Verizon cell tower proposal, Southwest Telecom, Mr. Warren Harden.
So, this proposal is for a cell tower for Verizon. The application was received, and we went to the Planning and Development Board, and they recommended approval for it. It's a two-hundred-foot monopole site located off of Illinois Kemp Road, and everything falls within our regulations for cell towers, and so, we're asking for your approval now. I have a map, since one thing that did come up at the Planning and Development Board was kind of exactly where it is, if you guys want to take a look at it, there's a map on there, but it's... But it's kind of a small scale. So, the, the part on the map where the, where the marker is, shows that where their access road is going to come from, Illinois Kemp Road over to the property.
If there's no questions or concerns, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Warren.
All right, we have approval of Safety Net Care Pool Certification of Public Funds for Fiscal Year Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Fourth Quarter, Ms. Veronica Paez.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, this is just the recertification of the Safety Net Care Pool for the fourth quarter. It's already been paid out, we're just seeking for the signatures on the recertification.
I'll make a motion to approve the Safety Net Care Pool Certification.
Thank you.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda. Did everybody get through all of these in our agenda packet?
Page seven ninety-two.
On page seven ninety-two. Do we have anything that we need to pull and discuss further?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda presented.
It's okay.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
And I do want to acknowledge that, I know you, everybody worked very hard over the weekend to get this out to us, and we appreciate all of these, you know, items on the agenda.
A lot.
All right, um, next we have our travel request consent agenda, which was also sent in our packet.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Thank you. It looks as if we have no emergency business today. Any legislative comments, announcements, or updates? Seeing none, we will move into elective official department comments, announcements, and updates. Chief Mack.
So, for the month of June, we had a total of three hundred and forty-seven requests for service, in comparison to last year, we had three hundred and seventeen, so we had thirty more this year. For the year-to-date statistics, January one to June thirtieth, this time last year, we were at seventeen seventy-two, this year we're at nineteen sixty-three, which is a nine point seven three percent increase in requests for service. Some major incidents and projects update, we conducted a swift water rescue utilizing the airboat that was purchased out at Brantley Lake, we actually accessed in the lake to get up the river, we were able to get to the guy, not have to put anybody in the water to put rescuers in danger.
You used the airboat?
Yep, got him out, brought him back in, so, it, it worked really good, and then we sent it up to Riodoso since this was put together, and they got to do some good training out there, different scenarios, so, it's a really good asset to have. And then, all generators are installed and operational at all staff stations, so now, no matter the conditions, we always have power, and we can get in and out of the station quickly, and we also have a safe haven if ever needed. And then the Otis Dorm Room Project, fire alarm and fire suppression project is completed, so, we have taken up occupancy of that, so, the guys actually have their dorm area now and are very thankful, so, aside from that, I'll stand for any additional questions or...
Appreciate the updates, you, glad you got me to use the airboat.
Yeah, for everybody asking, why do we need an airboat? Now, everybody knows.
Jen and Hazer showed you.
Thank you. All right, next we have our Detention Center Director Updates, Warden Billy Massengill.
Good morning, Madam Chair. So, Commissioners, so just a little bit of quick update, current population is typical, it's, kind of goes up a little bit there in the harder months, so we've had a little bit of rise of about, current population, about ten more individuals, so we're averaging around one ninety-five this, in that area. We had a meeting last week, last month, this month, Commissioner with the county manager, as well as Miss Sosa, about the new detention, there was an all-day meeting, they had a prior meeting the day before, and that's advancing very well. Life House, we were meeting with them this week about some, some additional services that they can enter, trying with the jail, as well as people departing the jail and them going into their services, so that'll be coming up. Not on the list, tomorrow, we will be implementing our new radio systems with the radios, so I got to give a shout-out to Chief Mack, as well as Chris for programming those, working with the state, and that'll be a big day for us tomorrow. That's all I have, any questions?
Thank you. Next we have IT Department Updates, Ms. Carol Hennington.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, we rolled out, we've been rolling out Microsoft three sixty-five, primarily for the email, you have to do it on the computers and on cell phones, and we've accomplished, completed eleven departments, we've scheduled facilities for tomorrow, we've touched a lot of detention, and we've started public works. Second thing is that we began updating Windows ten to Windows eleven, and the reason is that Microsoft is dropping their support for Windows ten after October. You can add extra pay and support it for a year, a year at a time, and it's like sixty-five dollars each, so, we don't want to do that for all the Windows ten. Right now, there's forty-five completed, two hundred and sixty-one more need to be updated before October. Thirty-seven of those computers don't have the internal organs to work with Windows eleven, so they will be replaced, and they are on our replacement list. The third one is, Jason Flores and I attended the Mexico Association of Counties Conference in Curry County in June, and at the affiliate meeting, we discussed items such as disposal of computers, how everybody does it, we met with, co-met with finance group, and discussed getting rid of data of terminated employees, and then back to the IT affiliate, we discuss, discussed disaster recovery among other IT information. Any questions?
Thank you. Accessors Department Updates, Ms. Rhonda Hatch.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, I just wanted to give a little bit of an update on the assessors' office, we completed our twenty-twenty-five certification in June, and we saw an overall growth in residential values of seventy-one million dollars. Non-residential values increased to almost twenty-five million, and our state assessed values increased almost a hundred and forty-five million. I just want to say that my employees work very hard to make sure all of this is, is done and on the tax roll before we certify our values in, in June. Six of our employees attended the IAAO classes in Albuquerque last week, this is a week-long, these are week-long classes, and they conclude with a final test on Friday, and the test results will be in anywhere between two to four weeks. And then on July first, the New Mexico Department of Veteran Services hosted a veteran tax-exempt event at the Alejandro Ruiz Senior Center, and my chief deputy and I were present to answer any questions that the veterans may have, and it, we had a really good turnout. In fact, the, the two men that were doing all the work there, they were like, we've had a really good, successful day, they had seen, we had, they hadn't seen that many veterans come in, in other counties that they had done this. That, the event, they were able to distribute exemption certificates on the same day, they were able to just print them out, and the veterans were able to bring them to our office the same day, and so my staff worked very hard that day with many veterans coming in and handing in their certificates, so we could get those exemptions on the tax roll. Other than that, do you have any questions?
Just one quick question, on the residential values, the increase, is that largely due to just the current market, or is that new construction?
A lot of it is new construction, you're seeing so much activity out south of town, like in the Morton Farms area and stuff, I mean, we're out there measuring houses weekly, because they're putting them up so quickly, and so that's mainly our new construction values.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have DWI Department Updates, Ms. Deborah Hampton.
So, I have a lot of stuff on my, so I'm just going to hit some of the key points, of, a couple of the components within our department. So, as far as with the program administration, the FY twenty-five, fourth quarter grant and distribution reports have been completed and submitted to DFA for the final approval. So, for grant funds, we spent an estimated amount of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars and ten cents. For distribution, we spent a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, two hundred, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand and two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-seven cent, with an overall total of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and fifty-seven cent. DWI prevention campaigns, including radio spots, billboards, newspaper advertisements, are scheduled to run in Artesia and Carlsbad in the coming months. DWI staff successfully completed the advanced DWI school facilitator training, and this training is, is a requirement for us to operate the DWI school. I got an email yesterday from Traffic Safety, they put out the new application for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, and so we will be working on completing the application for the renewal in October. For community wellness and outreach, Brandy and Savannah have been working really hard on the National Night Out Event, which will take place August the ninth, next Saturday. We have radio advertisement going, it's in the newspaper, they have really, been doing a really good job with this, and we hope that you all can come out and be a part of that event. And it will be at the Beach Band Shield, it's all day from eight to five. As far as with treatment, the DWI program staff offers MRT, which is More Recognition Treatment. Um... um, for outpatient substance abuse treatment to the DWI offenders free of charge. So if anyone is arrested with a DWI, um, and they need treatment, we do give their service free of charge. Or if they go to court for whatever reason, and the, uh, judge wants them to go to treatment, they can send them to us. We have two licensed, uh, clinicians, uh, that can do the outpatient treatment. Uh, so from May twenty-eighth to June twentieth, we referred seven clients to outpatient treatment, and one client to the DWI, uh, drug treatment court. Uh, for community service, uh, community service is available each weekend, it alternates between Artesia and, um, Carlsbad. We have three supervisors that rotate the detailed supervision. From May thirty-first to June twenty-second, eight roadway cleanup community service activities resulted in eight participants picking up, um, trash, tires, buckets, whatever, from the streets and highways. Um, they have all, they picked up refrigerators, mattresses, you name it, all kind of things in the past. And they keep a record of everything, so that we can let you all know what, what's out there, that people are just throwing on the side of the road. For assessments, uh, from May twenty-eighth to June twentieth, uh, we screened a total of nineteen DWI, um, screenings and assessments, uh, that were completed, and these range from first offense to third offense DWIs. And that's all I have, any questions?
Got a lot going on?
Yeah. Stay busy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deborah.
Thank you.
Next, we have Facilities Department updates, Ms. Jasmine Sosa.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Uh, so we are coming to an end on the progress of the first phase of the OEM. Um, this included to the additional of the offices for, um, the Safety Department, so they're finishing the ceiling grid, and then we have like the HVAC installation, so that should be completed pretty soon. Um, we also completed the last two offices of upgrades for Ms. Patsy in the Treasurer's Office, um, just to finish and match the upgraded aesthetic that she already currently has. We are in the process of planning the panic button installation at various locations, um, Clerks Courthouse, DWI Admin, and the Artesia MVD. Um, landscaping is also being done throughout the county, so they're working on that. And then I also wanted to add, um, tomorrow, we are finally scheduled, and it kinda has been delayed, um, we will be removing the tempered glass out of the downstairs previous, um, County Manager's Office, I'm sorry. Those don't have any support bars, so it's become like a liability and a safety issue, uh, so we're also gonna enclose that. So there'll be no more windows, um, just in that hallway, of course, across from the Treasurer's Office, those will remain. This will add privacy for HR, um, but maintenance will start that and ensure that area remains clean and everything for public and employees to walk through. Other than that, time for any questions?
Thank you.
Public Works Department update, Mr. Hazer Archer.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, so we kinda, we kinda touched on the flooded areas first. Um, so I've kinda shifted our department, we had a lot of projects going on, had to shift, of course, to take care of the flooding issues, uh, to get the roads travelable. I did misspeak on McDonald Road, we still do have that closed. I'm working as hard as I can with BLM, uh, to, to get that resolved. Uh, it's, there's a lot of red tape you have to cut through to get through into a waterway to address that, and we're probably gonna have to call in some more, uh, people and, and state agencies and that sort of thing. Um, road maintenance, so I have dedicated an entire, uh, crew to potholes, that, that is what they do. They're out every single day, including Fridays and Saturdays. Um, uh, shoulders and erosion control, control. We are, uh, we have a blade that is also out, full-time, working on those, cleaning those up. Um, of course, the flooded areas first, where we had the most erosion, um, that sort of thing. Um, and then some projects that we have coming up, uh, Buckskin Road, we, we need to finish that up, that's an internal, uh, public works. We have about three miles left on that, with the rains and things, we didn't chip, we would've just wasted money. Um, so we, we held off on that, we were trying to get that done before fiscal, we just didn't get it accomplished with the weather. Um, Kelly Road, we will completely redo it. Um, Tidwell, Burton Flats, those are all, so we are completely redone. Um, and a little more on the roads, um, I just wanna thank the Public Works Department for the hours they put in during those floods and things that were going on, that it just, I, I can't do without the team, and they, they did it for me, so. I just wanna one-hundred percent thank, thank the Public Works crew. Um, also with roads, we're looking at putting some gates in, we're taking a page out of the Artesia book. Um, we had a couple, uh, swift water rescues that were non-needed, and with gates, we can stop people, um, from going in where they're gonna go. My first ones will probably go in the West Loop, between Hildago and Lee Street. Um, that's where I'm gonna try them out and see, see what we can accomplish there. Um, it just, that's an area we have to haul barricades to almost every time it, we get any rains in the Guadalupe's, and so that'll be a great testing area to see if our gates actually work. Um, then also, our, I think we had six, um, employees compete in the rodeo. Um, it's at the New Mexico Conference, um, we won the greater competition and the great all competition, which is pretty phenomenal, 'cause we don't even have a great all. But we won, so, yeah, I was, I was very impressed with that. Um, the crew had a great time, got to meet some very, uh, various people from different counties, it was a good time of, that everybody had, and, and we're real proud of that, so. Um, the landfill update, that fence that y'all approved last time has worked amazing. Um, it's, it has stopped so much trash from blowing around out there. Um, it, it worked better than I anticipated, I'll put it that way. So, we, we very much appreciate that out there. The expansion, um, we're probably looking at a year. Uh, we're in BLM studies, um, they're fixing to do the reclamation of some arc sites they found. Um, so that's, WSP is working on that, and we'll be, we'll get that extra eighty acres up there on the other side. Vector, the mosquito complaints this year, um, talking to Johnny, our vector control, uh, foreman, he, he said he's never got so many calls in his life. Um, it's a good thing, it, it, it really is a good thing, because we know we're to treat problematic areas, we're treating new areas that we haven't treated before, we're finding new standing water areas that we haven't found before. Um, I've, I've got three that are doing the entire county, and they're, they're out every morning, some Fridays, they fog for the events at J.C. Park, at, uh, Carlsbad Beach. Um, just trying to get a handle on mosquitoes, but we know they're everywhere. So some things that people can do to prevent mosquitoes, um, standing water, if you have troughs that, um, if you have puddles, anything you can do to prevent standing water will help you out tremendously, and keeping your weeds under control, they thrive in weeds, so that, that's just a little public help. And just once again, I wanna thank OEM, Fire Services, Sheriff's Department, everyone for, for tasks that we were tasked with unexpectedly, middle of the night, long hours, just wanna thank everyone that was a part of that flood. Okay, any questions? Thank you.
And lastly, we have Human Resource Department updates, Ms. Anna Bossa.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Um, first off, I wanna start by saying, um, thank you on behalf of, of myself and county employees for the five percent increase. The personal leave credit and the seventy-five percent para and the, um, hundred percent paid insurance. HR has actually seen an increase in calls, inquiring about the insurance and stuff, and wanting to know where to apply and what positions we have open. I've heard a lot of positive feedback from the employees, they're very, they're very happy, so I'm gonna say thank you. Um, HR has, um, we have an applicant tracking system that we do online, and in June, we had ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-one actual site visitors to our site. Year-to-date, we'd had forty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty, so people are seeing our jobs, and they are going to our website. Um, HR staff actually processed two hundred and thirty applications in June, uh, we conducted thirty-three interviews in June. Um, our June new hires were nine, our year-to-date new hires are fifty-three, uh, resignations, terminations, retirements were five, um, we're sitting at thirty-eight year-to-date. And our current vacancy rate is at twenty-two point five percent.
Questions like a lot.
Yeah, if you see our posting from last time to this time, it has considerably decreased, so. It's working.
Well, who wouldn't wanna work for the county?
I know, it's a good place to work.
All right, next we have our County Managers comments and announcements.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, just a few items. Uh, one, just wanna compliment the Eddie County Fair, uh, Board, and that was an amazing experience, I really enjoyed, uh, being up there and, uh, seeing the Eddie County Fair, uh, great community event, and particularly, a big thanks to the Sheriff's Office and Public Works and Facilities for their role in providing safety and some improvements, uh, to the Eddie County, uh, fairgrounds. That's one. Uh, a big shout-out again to the county staff, various county departments, who all played a role in the flooding events that we recently had, and providing support, uh, to Ruidoso and Lincoln County. Uh, we recently sent a team up there, uh, to help them, so wanted to, uh, mention that. And there were a few items, uh, in my department, and I'll ask Adrian Jones, our new Chief of Staff, to offer a few comments. Ms. Adrian?
Thank you, Mike, Madam Chair, Commissioners, staff, guests. Um, we've been working on, uh, and working with our departments to try to streamline communications, so any citizens that need, that's attention from any of the services that we provide, can have a more intuitive and efficient way of making those concerns heard by us, and then we can disseminate them more efficiently for attention. And so we've recently rolled out a new email address, and then a phone number, which is currently my phone and desk extension, and probably eventually we'll dedicate a, a separate phone just for this, um, purpose. But the email address is ihaveaconcern@eddiede.nm.us, which is like our general staff email extension. Um, and then the phone number is five seven five, eight eight seven, nine five one one, extension two thousand two. And so anybody that, you've got a pothole that's real bad on your road, or you've, just anything that pertains to services that the county administers, even if you're not sure if it's a county thing or not, it's a, it's a simpler way, and we're trying to make it a shorter path for citizens, residents, business stakeholders to let us know that they need help, and then we'll work hard to, you know, get the communication right internally, to get them the, the help or even the information, if it's something that's not strictly a county matter. So, um, people have been making really great use of it already, and we're grateful to everybody internally that has helped in expediting those communications and attention to, to needs for service, a lot of it's been road-related 'cause of the floods and the rains, but there's been other things too. So we appreciate, um, you know, people using that, and we're gonna encourage that to, and we're gonna also keep looking for ways to streamline our response time and just our methods internally for being more efficient in responding to resident needs, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
That's all I have, please.
All right, County Commissioners comment, Commissioner Mike.
Um, I just kinda echo what, um, County Manager Gallagher said. The fair was awesome this year, and I'm gonna give a lot of credit to Eddie County for doing that. And actually, Eddie County got a lot of credit out there. I mean, people recognize the efforts from the county all the way around, and, um, it was great to hear, um, over the microphone, um, shout-outs to the county, and people were super excited, they had the greatest turnout they've ever had for a concert, it was packed. Um, and, um, they're really looking forward to continuing the growth and success, so. Um, just as somebody who's a close observer and act, and activist for the fair, I guess, um, I, uh, really appreciate everything the county did, and it didn't not go unnoticed, so.
Commissioner Klein?
Um, well, first I wanna address one of the things that came up in public comment this morning. Um, Ms. Mann brought up taxes being so high in Eddie County. Simply just not true. Um, Eddie County hasn't raised property taxes since the nineteen eighties, and since then, um, it has just continued to go down. Our sales tax rate is five point seven zero eight-three percent, which is the second lowest in the state, behind Lee County. And Eddie County's gross receipt tax rate is point eight three three percent, which is in the three lowest in the state, so. I can appreciate the concerns, but that one should not be one. Then I would like to talk about the flood response, and just thank the Office of Emergency Management, Public Works, Fire and Rescue, and the Sheriff's Department. There was a lot of rain, a lot of unexpected rain, a lot of washed-out roads, and everybody was kind of panicking through this, and it was great to see the response and see so many successful stories come out of it, so really, thank you guys, the county thanks you. And then, lastly, just wanna bring up the County's National Night Out, next Saturday. It's eight to five, we'll start off with a five K, I was actually supposed to race Mayor Henry in that five K. Lucky for him, I will be traveling back from New Mexico County's meeting, so he doesn't have to worry about me beating him pretty bad.
I'm gonna tell him.
Johnny, I hope you're listening. In addition to the five K, there's gonna be jumping houses, lots of food, lots of, lots of events for families, so it'll be something good to bring the kids, bring the family out, and just enjoy a good time. That's what I got today.
Thank you. Um, and again, uh, really appreciate the efforts of the county and our, you know, flood response, and just being available to the community and the people that we service, I really appreciate it. Um, as we all know, summer is about to be over, school starts on Monday officially. Um, just want to wish everybody, parents and students, a wonderful year ahead. Um, make sure that people are being safe when you're driving to work, you know, kids are gonna be out, buses are gonna be going, please be mindful of those, um, school crosswalks, um, what have you. And again, just wanna say thank you to everybody involved in, um, bringing the meetings together. It was a long gap in between meetings this time, we packed a lot in. Um, it was not unnoticed that, you know, email came on Saturday that everything had been done, so just really appreciate everybody's, you know, extra, extra time and, um, effort on this. And, um, with that, we will have executive session today. Um, the Board may go into executive session in accordance with the State of New Mexico Open Meetings Act, Section ten dash fifteen F one, H two, and eight, which authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to go into executive session to discuss limited personnel matters and real property. And how much time should we estimate?
It's gonna be a while.
Thirty minutes?
Uh huh, uh huh. Thirty, thirty, thirty to, thirty to sixty, yeah.
Thirty to sixty minutes?
Uh huh. So we're running thirty.
But we can say forty-five.
Forty-five, forty-five.
All right.
Do we need a, maybe you can go in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Winova?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Okay, we will tentatively see you back in forty-five minutes.
See you guys in a minute.
Yes.